I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Ms. Racker. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Good evening. As you have heard that Mr. Hinshaw is joining us via telephone this evening, please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. Okay, just further than usual. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Cates, would you like to introduce?
Welcome to everyone this evening. We'd like to start with recognizing some outstanding students and their parents. This time I'd like to call Director of Athletics and Activities Eric Winkowski to the podium.
Board of Education and Dr. Cates, thank you so much for taking some time tonight to honor some really talented students. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, I'm going to ask that you please walk forward, stand here, you receive your award, and you stand next to the podium. Additionally, any family members that are here with their student being recognized, would you please stand when we introduce your student so that you can be recognized also? Helping me present tonight are Palatine High School Principal Gary Steiger, Fremd High School Principal Kurt Teniper, Conan High School Principal Julie Novak, and Assistant Principal Bob Small, and Schaumburg High School Assistant Principal Shane Boland. And I think I want to note that Bob Small and Shane Boland, this will be their final board meeting officially as members of the Township High School District 211 administrative staff. So, thank you very much. Okay, we'll get started with the Palatine High School math team. Craig Barnes has been in the district for 23 years, 11 years at Hoffman Estates and the last 12 at Palatine High School. Craig serves as the Math Department Chair at Palatine High School and has been the Palatine Math Team Head Coach for the last 10 years. Craig?
Thank you. Math team practices all year long. We begin the first week of school, and we just concluded this last Monday with our awards banquet. Students put countless hours into preparing for this, and I'm so proud of the compliment of all our mathletes. I'm excited to share our success this year with this group, but also we had our junior senior eight-person team finish eighth, our freshman eight-person team finished ninth, our pre-cal team finished ninth, and our calculator team represents a small sample of success we had over the years. They had us, they have led us to an 11th place team state finish this year, and only about four questions out of about 200 out of 10th place, which includes schools like IMSA, Stevenson, Whitney Young, Naperville North and Central, Glenbrook South, New Trier, Fremd, and Walter Payton. Palatine is next on that list. This is absolutely incredible and directly due to the efforts of these students and all their fellow mathletes. The calculator team are in second place in the state, missing only two questions. The first-place team missed one. The contest is 20 problems in 20 minutes that require the use of calculators. I said calculators. To solve, sorry, most students choose at least two and some three calculators each to solve these problems. TI-84, TI-89, TI Inspire, TI Inspire CAS are all common vocab to these students. Team is made up of five: one freshman, one sophomore, one junior, one senior, and a wild card, which is usually a senior. Ryan Sow is here with his mother, Chris. Please come forward. Ryan is our freshman representative and was a natural instantly. He shows great enthusiasm for the calculator and programming. He loves to compete and is very excited to talk about math and solutions. He's extremely talented and I have very high expectations for him in the upcoming years. I anticipate him really taking the initiative to master all the calculator tricks and come up with his own in the next three years. Dominique De Fiestas is here with her aunt and uncle, Trina and Anthony Lee. Her parents are attending her siblings' eighth-grade graduation tonight. Dominique is our sophomore rep, and she may be small in stature, but mighty in ability. She rarely makes a mistake and is rock solid. As a freshman, she naturally took the unique user interface to the TiDNA, and as a sophomore, really solidified the team and was a huge contributor to the entire team. Sarah Gonwa is here with her parents, Sue Ann and Chris. Sarah is one of the senior reps and was initially shocked when I asked her to join the calculator team this year. She was, she has been a four-year member of math team, but this was the first time on the calculator team. She quickly embraced it and really excelled. Sarah's smile is infectious, and she really stepped up this year. I'm so proud of her. Sarah will be attending University of Minnesota next year to study economics and statistics. The last two members aren't able to be here, their siblings are graduating eighth grade from Winston Campus there, but I do want to just take a moment and recognize Eric Lindstram Jr. and Brandon Canfield, who is a senior, who has been the leader of this group, which has just been phenomenal. Just a quick story about him as a freshman, when I tapped him on the shoulder to be on the calculator team, he came back from the state meet and he said, "Coach, I wrote a calculator program to solve this problem," and that's just absolutely amazing to do in a 20 minutes and 20 calories. So, he's done an outstanding job. He's led the team to a 14th, a 7th, and 8th, and now a second-place state finish on the same contest. So, congratulations, all Palatine mathletes.
All right, next we'll bring forward Chris Guttone with the Fremd Math Team. Chris is a nationally board-certified math and computer science teacher at Fremd High School. He's been coaching the math team since 2007 and has been the head coach since 2012. Chris is also a proud graduate of Fremd High School.
It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Fremd High School Math Team who earned medals at the ICTM Mathematics Contest on May 6th. The eight students we are recognizing tonight earned fourth place in the state with their superb performance on the freshman-sophomore eight-person contest. And overall, the Fremd Math Team earned ninth place in the state, and it's the first time we've brought home a state trophy in over 11 years. The junior, the freshman-sophomore eight-person contest consists of 20 questions in 20 minutes. There are no calculators allowed, and each team member can only submit one answer sheet. Because of these challenges, a successful eight-person team requires a superb level of teamwork, communication skills, and mathematical ability. Our eight students practiced tirelessly for five months to achieve this level of success. Of course, they didn't get here completely on their own. I'm very grateful for how supportive Fremd's administration and the District 211 leadership is of our program, and I'm also very grateful for the strong support our students get from their parents. As I call each freshman-sophomore eight-person team member forward to receive a 211 medallion recognizing their accomplishment, I'd also like to introduce each student's parents. Here with her parents, Yong Ming and Jing Ru, is freshman Alice Chen. Here with her parents, Jen Chuen and Wen Ling, is freshman Ailing Pang. Here with his parents, Jason and RC, is freshman Kin Lin Pang. Here with his parents, Vidura and Delani, is freshman Sean Rendon. Here with his parents, Hao and Ying, is sophomore Edward Guo. Here with his parents, Yong and Ying, is sophomore Kevin Lee. Here with his parents, John and Patricia, is sophomore Michael Murakami. And finally, here with her parents, Li Ming and Ri, is sophomore Flora Zhang. Congratulations to all of you, and on behalf of the entire math team, I'd like to thank you for your tireless hard work and dedication. You have truly upheld the Fremd Math Team's tradition of excellence. Thank you.
All right, from math, we'll move on to science. Carl Garrison has been in the district for 17 years. He spent the last nine years as the Science Department Chair at Palatine High School. Carl has been coaching Palatine Science Olympiad Team for the last eight years. Carl.
Good evening. I'm just thrilled to be here again with the Palatine High School Science Olympiad Team. I'm glad we're getting to make this a yearly tradition. I also want to congratulate the Conan High School Science Olympiad Team and the coaches, Tracy Gala and Nicole Bailey, on their fantastic performance at the state tournament. Congratulations. Hopefully, we'll see each other again here next year. So, joining me, oh, let's see, so, all of us wanted to thank the Board of Education for providing our students with the opportunity to participate in this activity. Our superintendent, Dr. Dan Cates, our principal, Gary Steiger, our assistant principal, Mike Arthur, and all of our fellow Science Department colleagues that pitch in and help and provide continuous support for our students. And of course, the coaches want to give a special thank you to the wonderful parents of all of our Science Olympiad students. Thank you, parents. We truly enjoy working with your children. Science Olympiad is a team competition in which 15 students make up a team, and they work in pairs or threes to compete in 23 different events pertaining to earth science, biology, chemistry, physics, astronomy, and engineering. So, to get to state, we competed in the regionals, placed in 20 of the 23 events and finished fourth as a team. We competed the state tournament for the sixth consecutive time, fourth at the AA level, and we won medals in three events, including a second place in electric vehicle, a fifth in material design, and a fifth in experimental design. The events in which the students earn medals include electric vehicle. Students build an electric vehicle that travels a specific distance in the shortest amount of time and stops as closely to a particular point as possible, but the catch is the kids don't know how far it has to go until they get there. Material science, it tests the knowledge of the properties and characteristics of metals. Ceramics, polymers, and composite materials with a focus on material characterization, and intermolecular forces and surface chemistry. So, that's a wide variety of knowledge and concepts that the students have to be familiar with. And experimental design, students are given materials and asked to perform an experiment on a certain scientific topic. They are then required to create a lab write-up, which is used to score the event. So, at this time, I would like to present to you the seven Palatine High School students who are in medals at the recent Science Olympiad State Tournament in the events I just described. So, accompanied by his parents, Kristen Felstehausen and Eric Honermeyer, earning a second-place award in electric vehicle, I present junior Max Honermeyer. Earning a fifth place in material science, I present senior Nea Patkounis, who's going to be studying physics at the University of Alabama next year. Accompanied by her parents, Catherine and Daniel Dominus, earning a fifth place in material science, I present senior Clarissa Dominus, who will be studying material science at the University of Illinois-Champaign next year. Accompanied by her parent, Rosita Zurcher, earning a fifth place in experimental design, we have one of our captains, junior Abigail Zurcher. Accompanied by his parents, Jennifer and William Soloway, earning a second-place award in electric vehicle, I present junior Josh Soloway. And we also had two students who couldn't make it. We had junior Josephine Selvik, who earned a fifth place in experimental design, and we had another junior, Eric Lindstrom, who earned a fifth place in experimental design also. So, on behalf of the Palatine High School Science Olympiad Team, the students, the coaches, and all of our supporters, we thank the Board of Education and Dr. Cates for recognizing us tonight. We appreciate the support, the encouragement, and we look forward to earning the right to be here again next year. Thank you.
Tracy Gala has been a chemistry teacher at Conan High School for the past 16 years, and she has spent the last six years coaching Science Olympiad. With her tonight is her co-coach, Nicole Bailey, who is in her 50th year of teaching and her first year at Conan High School.
Thank you for taking the time tonight to recognize our Conan High School Science Olympiad state medal winners. My name is Tracey Gala, as mentioned, and I am one of the coaches of the CHS Science Olympiad Team. My co-coach is Nicole Bailey, and we are very pleased to present many of our Science Olympiad Team members to you. There are 23 regular events and five trial events, as Carl mentioned, covering the major content areas of science and engineering. Students competed in teams of two or three by taking written exams and/or testing devices that they built to accomplish a specified function. Our team made the state competition for the second time in our seven-year history, and our students earned medals in 12 events. Overall, our team earned fourth place in the A Division of the state. Before I call up our students, I'd like to thank Carl Garrison and the Palatine High School Science Olympiad coaches for their support of our team every year, particularly their support of our coaches, as well as thanking our administration and the board for their support of our team every year. And now, I'd like to recognize the following students and their parents. Freshman Sohil Ahmed, here with his mother, Nishat Fatima, earned third place in herpetology. Freshman Anai Patel, here with his parents, Dipali and Raj Patel, earned third place in herpetology. Freshman Rishva Patel, here with her mother, Jyoti Patel, earned second place in helicopters. Freshman Liz Zhang, here with her parents, Janet Gao and Henry Zhang, earned third place in Write It, Do It. Sophomore Archisha Ghosh, here with her parents, Sarmila Ghosh and Debashish Ghosh, earned first place in environmental chemistry. Sophomore Het Pandya, here with his parents, Malati Pandya and Naraj Pandya, earned first place in geocaching. Sophomore Sarav Sumaghan, here with his parents, Sima Sumaghan and Sumaghan Aravindan, earned second place in disease detectives and third place in anatomy and physiology. Junior Aman Patel, here with his parents, Dipali and Raj Patel, earned second place in helicopters. Junior Anushka Shaw, here with her parents, Swati and Mani Shaw, earned third place in Write It, Do It. Junior Sarah Yamaguchi, here with her parents, Reese and Brian Yamaguchi, earned second place in disease detectives and third place in optics. Senior Visme Galat, here with his parent Monica Galat, earned third place in optics. Senior Kunal Mahajan earned third place in experimental design, third place in anatomy and physiology, and second place in wind power. Senior Satwick Pachigola, here with his parents, Pramila and Krishna Pachigola, earned third place in thermodynamics. Senior Keisha Shivam, here with his mother, Madhu Jain, earned second place in chemistry lab. Senior Mateesh Patel, here with his parent, Archie Patel, earned third place in thermodynamics and mentored the second-place team in helicopters. Senior Keishan Patel, here with his mother, Namisha Patel, mentored the second-place team in helicopters. Four additional students earned individuals' medals as well, but were unable to attend this evening. We want to thank you for your time, as well as your support of our students and the Science Olympiad program every year. Thank you.
The American College Test, or ACT, has been taken by nearly 60% of America's college-bound students. The highest possible composite score is 36, which is achieved by less than 1/10th of 1% of students taking the exam. Out of nearly 2.1 million students in the class of 2016 across the United States who took the ACT exam, only 2,235 students earned a score of 36. I'm proud to say that tonight we have a Conan High School student here to be recognized for this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education, a very proud set of teachers, and some wonderful parents, we would like to congratulate you. We have a certificate for you that the Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present in just a moment. Our outstanding student has asked music teacher Heather Lofdal to introduce her to the Board of Education this evening.
It is with great pleasure tonight that I introduce to you Allison Zhang, accompanied by her parents, Janet and Henry, and her sister, Liz. Allison, if you'll please come forward. Allison is here tonight, as Dr. Cates said, to be recognized for her perfect score on the ACT, which is undoubtedly a high achievement. Allison certainly is a scholar. She can regularly be found studying or doing homework or helping others with assignments in school. Aside from that, though, Allison is also an exemplary human, athlete, and musician. She is a member of both the Triem National Music Honor Society, as well as NHS. She plays violin in the Conan High School Chamber Orchestra, which I teach, and I am honored to have been a part of her life and learning for the past two years. On countless occasions, I have witnessed examples of her outstanding character as she volunteers to help her friends and teachers in the music department, or steps up to learn an extra piece of music for a concert, all while maintaining very high academic and personal standards. Many other teachers who have had Allison in class tell similar stories. Those are her work ethic, perseverance, kindness, and selflessness. I am so proud of Allison for her ACT score and all of her accomplishments up until this point, and I cannot wait to see how she changes the world in the future.
To recognize graduating high school seniors who have excelled both academically and who have clear goals and purpose for their futures, and who have demonstrated excellent character and giving spirit, the Daily Herald sponsored its 16th annual academic team. Out of 17 public and private high schools in the northwest suburban area, District 211 had five representatives named to the 10-student academic team. For their commitments and achievements, these students were featured in a special section of the Daily Herald just a few days ago on May 23rd. This evening, they will each receive a certificate from Board of Education President, Mrs. Burke, to honor their achievement. Each of our students has a sponsor here tonight who will introduce them. Sponsors, please follow this order. From Fremd High School is social studies teacher Loriann Friere. From Schaumburg High School is Science Department Chair Jason Campbell. From Hoffman Estates High School is science teacher Suzanne Featherling. From Palatine High School is Math Department Chair Craig Barnes. And from Schaumburg High School is counselor Erica Worline. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank our students for their dedication to educational and personal excellence. Congratulate you and your families on this wonderful recognition and being selected to the 16-17 Daily Herald Academic Team. From this point, we'll have Loriann, please come forward.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Ruchi and her academic accomplishments and being named to the Daily Herald Academic Team. Mr. and Mrs. Chitka Pucker, please stand and be recognized as well. Thank you for your commitment to academic excellence and support of Ruchi. I am proud to stand here to recognize the contributions Ruchi has made to my classroom and to our larger Fremd community. Ruchi has a unique ability to maintain academic rigor and commitment to excellence while making everyone in the room feel comfortable and valued. Her easy laugh and welcoming smile encourages deeper discussions and exploration of difficult topics. Her desire to spend her free time at space camp or on college campuses, engaging in conversations that deepen her understanding of the world, and to make herself available to others exemplifies why Ruchi is deserving of this honor. She is a scholar in our community with heightened awareness of the change that she can bring to our world. I applaud Ruchi's determination and engagement in pursuing these opportunities, and I look forward to continuing to learn of the future recognitions that will be bestowed upon Ruchi as she moves forward to join the Cornell community. Thank you and congratulations, Ruchi.
Very pleased to be here this evening to introduce to you Kevin Everhart, and also to tell you a little bit about him. He is here tonight with his parents, Andrea and Michael Everhart. If they would stand, please. Kevin is the, Kevin is the second of five sons in his family who have made and are currently making and will soon be making their mark at Schaumburg High School. Their family is a gem in our high school community, and, Mom, keep up the good work. Kevin is a U.S. Presidential Scholarship finalist. He's a national merit finalist. He is a national AP scholar, and he's the recipient of the NSLYY scholarship. This scholarship allowed him the opportunity to study abroad one summer in China. Kevin's a three-time qualifier and competitor in the state math tournament. He's an important member of that math team and a leader. He's also a leader on our math, science, and engineering competition team. Kevin is also a two-time qualifier and competitor at the boys' state finals tennis tournament, where Kevin was today, earlier today, competing. And after three rounds of competition, Kevin and his partner are one of only two positions in the Midsuburban League who will advance tomorrow and represent us there. Good luck, Kevin, in that. Kevin is not short on accolades, those in the past and those to come in the future. But what I'm most excited to tell you about tonight about Kevin is the young man that I know him to be, and the character that Kevin has. Kevin's mark of true distinction is that the adults in his life find him to be highly competent, to be thoroughly trustworthy, and to be surprisingly humble. And his peers, his friends, they find Kevin to be fun, to be fair-minded, and to be inspirational. Kevin is moving on to the U of I, where he will study computer science and also finance. Kevin, you've done great things at Schaumburg High School. We expect great things in the future. Congratulations on this award.
I would like to thank the school board for having us here this evening to recognize one of the district's finest, Ms. Perine Shaw. Perine is accompanied by her parents, Upen and Reka Shaw. Mr. and Mrs. Shaw, if you'd please stand for recognition. Perine is an academic powerhouse. Her intellectual capacity is beyond measure. Perine is an academic powerhouse. Her intellectual capacity is beyond measure. Her creativity is wildly extravagant, and her academic achievements are impressive. Her understanding of abstract ideas is astounding, and her clarity of thought is beyond that of her classmates. She radiates passion and energy for all subject areas. She is truly exceptional. Her academic record has remained unblemished throughout her high school career despite a rigorous course load. She scored near-perfect on both the SAT and the ACT, is an Illinois State Scholar, an AP Scholar with distinction, a Presidential Scholar, named one of the top Student Athletes of the Year, and a National Scholar finalist. In addition, Perine is only the second student from Hoffman Estates High School and from District 211 to be named to the Daily Herald Leadership Team and the Daily Herald Academic Team. In the fall, Perine will attend UIC, where she's been accepted to the GPPA program. GPPA stands for Guaranteed Professional Program Admissions, and it assures a select number of incoming undergraduate students a seat in medical school. Perine, on behalf of the administration, faculty, and staff at Hoffman, we're so honored to have you as one of our distinguished alumna. Congratulations.
I have been given the privilege to present Emily Steinbray and her parents Jim and Heather to the board tonight. Emily was selected to the Daily Herald Academic Team. I cannot think of a better pirate to represent PHA since its three pillars of its Commit to the Pirate Program. The first pillar is integrity. Emily has the highest integrity of any student I've ever known. I can remember multiple occasions when Emily refused to give answers to an assignment, or provide information on an upcoming test for some of her peers taking the same test later in the day. Emily would in turn encourage them to study on their own, and give suggestions to help them prepare for the exam. Emily was always willing to help her peers and learn the material selfishly, and help students in class on math team, but always for the purpose of learning, not completing. In the world of all AP classes and very rigorous curriculums, it is very tempting to take a look at easy ways to complete the task and postpone the learning to meet a deadline. Emily never let deadlines limit her learning. She planned it all out, kept her schedule, and encouraged and helped her peers to do the same. I remember initially, she was thought to be crazy by some of her peers for her hard-line stance in sharing work and information, but it soon became the way it should be. She's the model for academic integrity. She encouraged all her peers to do the right thing, and they are better for it. Emily also held herself to the same standards. She never wanted the answer to give into her, but only the tools to complete her understanding so that she could finish every problem herself. The second pillar is respect. Emily quickly earned the respect of her peers, not only with her integrity, but by being one of the hardest-working students I've ever known. She made sure she did every assignment completely and for mastery. If she did not feel comfortable with that topic, she may redo the assignment, ask for more practice, or come in with a list of post-it notes with specific questions, or just keep it working until she felt comfortable. Her peers know that if they ask Emily for help, they will get it, as long as it's for the purpose of learning, not for taking a shortcut. I cannot think of another student that is more respected by her peers than teachers. On math team, there's a quote I have heard many times, and it is, "I want to be like Emily." She models daily all the behaviors that are needed for success, and her peers and her younger mathletes recognize this and respect her for it. She has set the bar for all to try to reach. Emily loves, did I say loves, the music Hamilton? And she is always singing and talking about the musical. She finally got tickets for the musical, and it happened to be the same night as one of our math team meets. Emily did not want to let her team down, and chose to pass on attending the musical to attend the meet. Even more amazing is that I had no idea, until a month after the meet, that she had made this choice. Her fellow students knew, and they respect her for her dedication to the team and set the bar for all to match for the rest of the year. The good news is that her parents were able to get her tickets for a show in July, and I'm sure she cannot wait. The math team is so much better because of her hard work and dedication. The final pillar is achievement. That is why we're here. Emily has achieved being recognized as a Daily Herald All-Academic Member, earning a perfect score in the ACT, earning straight A's, taking sixteen AP exams, being designated as an AP Scholar, earning two University of Illinois College Math Course Credits in Multi-Variable Calculus and Differential Equations, being named the Science Department Student of the Year, recognized as the Outstanding Mathlete of the Year, earning a National Merit Scholarship, and there are many, many, many more awards for math team in other areas I have not mentioned. Emily even wrote the script for the children's play performed at Palatine for the community this year, and even wrote a rap for the math team that summarized her senior four-years math team that wasn't spot-on and just amazing. I believe she could never accomplish all this unless she had complete mastery and understanding of what integrity and respect are. Her parents have clearly instilled these core beliefs in her, and Emily has instilled them in her peers. Emily will be attending University of Minnesota, planning to at least double-major in computer science, actuarial science, and mathematics. In closing, I'm happy to present Emily to the board as a Daily Herald Academic Team member, but absolutely ecstatic to present Emily Steinbray to the board for being an outstanding young woman. We have a saying at Palatine, and it could not apply more to Emily, and that is, "Once a pirate, always a pirate." Congratulations to Emily for her accomplishment, and kind of just her parents for raising such a wonderful young woman. Congratulations, Emily.
I am honored to present Shatij Bashi as a member of the 2017 Daily Herald Academic Team. He is accompanied by his mother, Repentu, and also his sister, Bashi. In the four years that I've known Shatij as his counselor, he has made a lasting impression on me, as well as many others at Schaumburg High School, as an incredibly insightful learner and a leader amongst his peers. For his commitment in the classroom, he has accumulated a very impressive grade-point average, and he has proven his intellectual prowess by receiving perfect scores on both the ACT and SAT, in addition to qualifying as a National Merit finalist. He has also been an extremely valuable member of our debate team for four years as a Legislative and Economics Chair. He has brought his team to victory at the state and also at the national level in certain areas. In the fall, he plans to attend the University of Michigan. He's majoring in Political Science and Business, and I congratulate you on all of your accomplishments that you've made so far at Schaumburg High School, and I cannot wait to see what you accomplish in the years to come. Congratulations.
This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Lisa Small to the podium to introduce some excellent community volunteers, and tell us a little bit about the Incubator Entrepreneur Program.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. First, I'd like to introduce Cliff Watanuki, who is one of our incubator teachers from Palatine High School, who will be joining me to introduce you to our incubator volunteers tonight. The incubator course is in its second year at our five high schools. This year, our students developed forty-nine business ideas via the Lean Start methodology. These business teams learned about the importance of testing, failing fast, and pivoting on your assumptions as soon as you learn them. This unique class keeps business teams connected to volunteers from the local community. In order for this to occur, District 211 has over one hundred business women and men who are willing to share their time and expertise with our students. Our volunteers are community champions, mentors, coaches, and Board of Directors. The community champions work tirelessly to keep our students networked with our experts. We could not run this course without the work of our community champions and their connections to other business people. Coaches are the content experts, consultants, and co-teachers with our classroom teachers. These coaches volunteer to bring the curriculum alive with real story and experiences. The coaches don't just come in one time. They actually commit for multiple days to come in and work with our students. The mentors are assigned to business team to keep them progressing and inspired. Mentors meet with students throughout the entire year, during the school year, and outside, to ensure a realistic approach to the business ideas and provide a foundation of experience. Finally, the Board of Directors. These are a group of volunteers who help make the minimum viable product decisions and review the final academic pitch, the culminating event for most of our teams. It is my pleasure to introduce to you a representative group of our business incubator volunteers, who dedicate their time and are willing to share their expertise with our students. Volunteers, if you could come forward when I call your name. Ferdinand Alfajura from TaxWe.com. Christopher Davis, Strategic Technology Architecture Association. Aaron Jukasz from Lettuce Entertain You Restaurants. Yumi Yan Khan from IT Consultants. CJ Ritterbusch, Concord Marketing Solutions. Mike Sekulich, Pepper Group. David Wolf, Wolf's Flea Market. Eric Wazewitz, Greenbrier Group, and one of our community champions. Laurel Kreese, Cognizant. Connie Allen, Motorola Solutions. And Chrissy Frohak, Lexmark. This course would not be the same without our coaches, mentors, Board of Directors, and community champions. On behalf of our students, thank you for your dedication to our future young entrepreneurs.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate all the students and volunteers here this evening. We will take a short break to allow for some photographs. We will begin our business portion with citizens appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up on the yellow sheet that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we have nobody signed up to speak this evening, and we will move along to our presentation of health science pathways. Dr. Cates?
We're very pleased to continue our description to the board about our career pathways. At our meeting last month, we had a, earlier this month, actually, we had an opportunity to present an update on the overall development that we've had in progress in our pathway development. Tonight, Dr. Small is going to lead us with several outstanding teachers in describing the progress that's happening, actually, within one of the pathways with health sciences. Dr. Small?
Thank you, Dr. Cates. First, I'd like to introduce the three teachers that are in front of you, and their unique background that they bring to District 211. Nicole Brennan's on your left. She is a Hoffman Estates science teacher. She's a licensed RN with a specialty in labor and delivery, has always loved science, and found her way from the hospital arena into the classroom. In the middle, Vicky Degia is from our science department at Palatine High School. She's been a registered nurse for the past fourteen years, has always been dabbling in teaching, and found her way into our high school classrooms. And then on your right is Eric Hauser. He's a science teacher from Conant High School. While he was going through college, he was in Emergency Medical Technician, had a science degree, went into the business world, and then found his way back into our classrooms. So I welcome all three of these teachers, as they're going to give you some perspective on some of the details behind our health science pathway. First, we're going to do a little bit of history. So, individual classes within the arena for students who are interested in the medical field are not new. In the past six years, we have started with our Certified Nursing Assistant Class, which you're going to hear about tonight. We added on very quickly the Medical Terminology Class, and just recently, we've added Anatomy and Physiology. Those you might say, look at those three and say, "Well, that in itself is a pathway." And what you're going to see tonight is that those courses, though they do make up a nice sequence for students, what we're presenting are pathways that are really well-rounded for our students to not only go into some core courses, but also look at supplemental and enhancement courses along the way. So Nicole's going to start us off with our Health Career Exploration and Medical Terminology Class.
The Medical Terminology is a dual-credit class that students in all three pathways that you'll hear about tonight will take and are encouraged to complete. This course introduces students to the basic structure of medical words, with an emphasis on the professional language that is required for work in the healthcare field. This course is also a prerequisite class, as mentioned before, for the dual-credit CNA course that we offer, as well as in many of the other health sciences pathways at Harbor College. Students interested in the career fields that are indirectly related to healthcare have also been encouraged to take the Medical Terminology Course. At the start of every school year, I meet one-on-one with every student that's enrolled in my class, and we just have a discussion as to why they're taking the course. Many of the students have the typical answer of, "I want to be a doctor. I want to be a nurse. I want to be a physical therapist." But I had one particular student named Jen. When I came to her, she said, "Well, I want to be a police officer." And I was like, "Okay." I was like, "That's interesting. So why are you taking Medical Terminology Class?" And she said that her counselor had encouraged her to take it, because as a first responder, she might have to actually assess and take care of a wounded victim. And so, I was like, "Okay, well, that's really interesting." Towards the end of first quarter, she was kind of hesitant about the class. She wasn't quite sure how it would fit in, and so she came to me and she said, "You know, I think I want to drop this class. It's not really for me." And I said, "You know what? You made it through half the semester. We're going to learn more about medical terminology in the context of anatomy and physiology, where you'll learn way more about the human body. And so why don't you just stick it out for the next quarter, and we can reassess this at the semester?" And so she agreed. So, that January, after we got back from break, she didn't drop the class. She stayed with it. In the registration time period during the early winter months, she actually ended up registering for the CNA course, as well as the Anatomy Physiology course for the next year. I had the pleasure of having her in the anatomy course this year. She just graduated, and she informed me that she plans on now pursuing nursing in college next year. In addition to the work and the activities that students complete in the Medical Terminology class, students are able to further explore the health science and apply their newfound medical vocabulary by participating in medical simulation labs at the Museum of Science and Industry. So this is a field trip that we take these students on, so they can kind of get some hands-on experience, exploring different diagnostic tools, and they actually interact with this human robot that actually talks back to them. So they get to run tests and assess them, and really get to use that medical language and communicate using that language in an actual situation, as opposed to just in the classroom. And so, that's one of the many opportunities that they get to use what they're learning in class outside of the classroom.
Anatomy and Physiology is a full-year dual-credit course, open to juniors and seniors in Township High School, District 211. Most of the students taking this course are also enrolled in additional science courses, such as physics, AP Chemistry, AP Biology, and are, as Nicole said, our Certified Nursing Assistant Course. Students study the human body, learning about organs and tissues, as well as functions of various body systems, such as the cardiovascular, digestive, skeletal, muscular, and endocrine, just to name a few. Each spring, towards the end of the school year, we take students to Rush University in Chicago, where students are given full access to their gross anatomy lab. On average, there are anywhere between thirty and forty cadavers, where students are given full access to gown and glove up, and go out there and just explore. As you can see, an experience like this totally reinforces what we're doing in the classroom, and it's definitely a highlight for our students. As Nicole mentioned, I always enjoy receiving emails from students who have taken courses within the health science pathways, such as anatomy physiology, medical terminology, or even CNA. I recently received one from a student just this spring, Neil, who, I recall Neil as a freshman, then even as a senior, wanting, a desire to go to medical school. He ended up getting into medical school through a fast-track program. He is now going to be at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, where he's starting his training in anesthesiology. So, emails like that definitely reinforce why we do what we do.
I'm short. Sorry. Got to move up. Okay. So, this is our sixth year of CNA. It's a two-semester program that allows students to learn basic nursing skills, such as assisting patients with dressing, with feeding, with bathing, with personal hygiene, or sometimes just to sit and talk to them, because they really don't get a lot of visitors, and a lot of them are old and lonely. Towards the end of the first semesters, the students will be applying the skills that they learn in the classroom and work in a skilled nursing and long-term care facility. In May, the students usually, this is around the time that we test for certification, and we don't have our results yet this week, but by next week.
by next week, we should find out. And we are expecting our students to be certified in the state of Illinois. Right after certification, the students are able to get jobs as CNAs and patient care tax in pretty much any, any type of medical healthcare facility. During one of our clinical rotations, I had a student by the name of Jose who responded to a call light of a known difficult patient. Most of the staff usually avoid this patient because she's very particular in the techniques that, that are to be utilized in her care. She has very high expectations as far as in terms of level of care, and when you don't do it right, you don't get a second chance. So Jose went in there and answered the call light, and the patient had asked her, or asked him, I'm sorry, to hand her a stack of special dressing changes. This patient had a condition where she, it was complicated daily, wound dressing changes were necessary, and she just usually doesn't let anybody touch her stuff. But she asked Jose to bring them to her, and when, when he did that, he sincerely asked her what the supplies were for and how they were used. Well, this really impressed this patient, and she was really impressed with the compassion and sincerity of Jose. She had requested me, summoned me to the room. I thought we were in trouble. But she summoned me to the room and said that I taught him well. And she also wrote a note for Jose to take home to mom, and on the note, she put, you raised a good human person. And so Jose also got to stay and assist in the, in the application of the dressing, and this is the one and only time this has ever happened. So what is this transition that I speak to you about every few weeks here in terms of looking at courses by department versus courses by pathway? So the department approach, which is very common at the high school levels, whereas, as well as the collegiate level, is really a way to systematically organize courses, and it is very beneficial to the faculty and the staff. It is not so beneficial to the student. Because when we talk to students and we ask them, what is it you want to take? What courses do you want to enroll in? Typically, we couple that question with, well, what are you interested in? What are you passionate about? What do you think you might want to do when you leave us? And unfortunately, if they say, I want to go into the medical field, we don't have a department called the medical field. If you flip through our curriculum guide, you won't find that. If they say they want to be a lawyer, you can't find that department. And that's what this pathway work is all about, not only just in lining up the coursework, but lining up our offerings outside of the coursework. So these are the 16 career clusters that you've seen before. And what we're starting to do in this process, and we're halfway through this year, is align our courses to pathways by cluster. And today, what we're going to go through are the details of the pathways within this health science area. We have three different pathways: patient wellness, medical research and development, and health information and management. These pathways have already gone to the local industry people through industry meetings that we held this winter with teachers and healthcare professionals, as well as two-year and four-year universities, to present to them what we've done and to get their feedback. So we've made some changes in our coursework, and our teachers today are going to briefly take you through each one of these pathways and talk just a little bit about the coursework that's in there. You'll see the coursework at three different levels. There's core courses, supplemental courses, and enhancement courses. Core courses are designed to be the, if you want to know more about this course and prepare for this career and plan for it in the future, you need to take your core courses. If you have some open room in your schedule, and you like that area and want to explore it more, take a supplemental course. An enhancement course is more of, if you're going to take a social studies credit because you need it for graduation, or you want to take an extra social studies class, why don't you consider these courses? That's the idea behind the enhancement courses. So that a student can look at a full arena of coursework through all four years in terms of what they might want to plan to do. There's, they don't get locked into their coursework by any means, but it gives them a picture that's very different than looking through a standard curriculum guide. So as Dr. Small mentioned earlier, if, if a student was interested in having a medical career, biology, chemistry, medical terminology, certified nursing assistant, anatomy and physiology, pretty much a no-brainer that they would probably, should dabble in. But what was, what's interesting here are the enhancement courses. I wanted to point out Spanish and speech. When we had our industry expert meeting earlier this year, one of the things that we had asked, asked experts was that what do you look for when you are hiring a potential employee? And the response was clinical experience, interpersonal skills, and a multi-cultural perspective. So we really think that it's important for our students to learn a second language, maybe Spanish, and take a speech class so that they can develop their interpersonal skills. So at one time again during our rotation, we were taking care of a team of patients, and in, in one of the rooms, we had an elderly gentleman who spoke very little English. His main language was Hindi. His wife was also there most of the time, but she also spoke very little English. So as you can imagine, it was very hard to figure out what was going on. We couldn't figure out if they were understanding what we were trying to explain. We were fortunate that day that we had a student who spoke Hindi, so we, I assigned her to that team of patients, and she was able to communicate to the couple. I made sure that she checked in on them on a regular basis. I made sure that she spent extra time in the room to make sure that they are understanding that everything was going on. And so at the end of the day, the nurse in charge of that patient gave me feedback and shared with me how grateful the, the couple were because quoting the wife saying she no longer felt isolated because she could actually communicate.
Moving on to the health information and management pathway, as you look at the list of recommended, recommended courses for this pathway, you'll notice that there are several classes that are not related to direct patient care, not necessarily directed towards science or math, which is typical when you think of a health careers pathway. So you'll notice the, the business exploration, speech, and professional communication are just ones that I want to highlight that are on the list above. And as mentioned before, these classes aren't typically thought of when you're pursuing a career in this field, but they are vital to this specific pathway. In addition to having a background in science and math, students exploring the health information and management pathway should have a knowledge of business practices and basic business principles in order to knowledgeably work with patients, insurance companies, hospitals, pharmaceutical companies, and so on. These courses will also help students sharpen their skills at speaking in front of people, which will happen at some point or many points within their career, as well as strengthen their ability to communicate with confidence in any situation. So this pathway is not normally recognized by the students when you ask them what they want to do, and they say medicine, and again, it's doctors, nurses. They don't realize that there are many other options available to them that are related to the healthcare field. So during the early weeks of January, I like to visit the sophomore and junior-level classes to just kind of talk to them about and inform them about the medical terminology classes and the anatomy physiology classes. And when I do that, I ask really quickly a quick, brief survey of like what they want to do. So I ask them, who wants to be a doctor, a nurse? And students raise their hand. And then I ask them, well, are there any students interested in business, or marketing, or advertising? And then other students are like, why is she talking about this? I thought she was talking about science classes. And so students, you know, raise their hand, and then they're like, well, what does this have to do with those jobs? And so that's when I talk to them about how there are business sides to healthcare. Hospitals and clinics and doctors' offices, they're businesses, and they have to have management system in place for them to run correctly. And so they need people who have that business background. And marketing and advertising, I talk to them about all of the equipment that doctors use, that surgeons use, the drugs, medicine that patients take, they need to be advertised and marketed. And so they need sales reps, and they need marketing representatives in that field so that they can communicate and interact with those businesses. So a lot of the students aren't aware of that. So as we advertise this pathway, I do anticipate that more students will be enrolling in these classes.
Courses within the health science pathway can also lead students to careers in research and development. Last year, I had a senior student, Alyssa, take health occupations and medical terminology as a senior, which normally is a junior-year course. She took it simultaneously with, with another science course, Bio2. At the beginning of the year, one of the activities we always do is talk to the students about what type of career they want to pursue within the healthcare industry. And her choice caught me off guard. As we've said tonight, many students, you know, doctors, nurses, she actually said she wanted to do research and development within the healthcare field. And I said, well, what do you want to get out of this course? What do you want to get out of med terms? And she said, I want a foundation. I want to learn some of the basics so that I can apply it later on when I go to college. And she felt taking that course, medical terminology, would provide that foundation, and it certainly has. I recently heard from her, she graduated in 2016, and she just finished her freshman year at the University of Illinois Springfield, where she's majoring in biology with an emphasis on research and development. So it's, just building that foundation, I think, has, has helped her.
This is our D211careercluster.org website. We are updating it this summer with the work that happened through this past school year. We had 24 teacher meetings, 16 industry meetings, and over 90 teachers participate as we work through the pathways of eight of the clusters that are found on this website. And I'd like to close with just telling you what our goal is for a pathway, because a pathway isn't just a list of courses. A pathway is a list of courses, obviously, that the student takes beyond just a single row of this, then this, then that, which you've seen with our core enhancement and supplemental courses. It's also work-based learning, where students have the opportunity to get out into the field, whether it be through clinicals, whether it be through field trips, to see what the workplace is really like, and have that outside-of-the-classroom experience to go along with their coursework. And then finally, a pathway is a pipeline to their next steps. So if it's a, if it's a pipeline to a career, we have given them some type of certification or advanced training to help them get into an above-entry-level job in that career. If they're going to two-year school, they have coursework that is already aligned and ready for them to go into the two-year school, as you've heard with some of our dual-credit classes. In a four-year school capacity, same thing. The coursework that we have for dual-credit can transfer into any of the four-year schools, should they enter to choose that way. So when we develop our pathways, it is a three-pronged approach of coursework, work-based learning, and a pipeline into their next steps, whatever it might be.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
You know, I have a comment that I forgot I was going to say. Vicky was very modest. Vicky, what percent of your students passed their CNA licensing test?
Well, I've been doing this for four years, so we're at 100%. So I'm holding my breath for next week.
Those are, actually, that's the state Illinois Health Department test that they take, and they pass.
I would like to comment. The presentation was excellent, as usual. But I would like to provide some feedback that I hear all the time coming out of the schools and the kids, is particularly about the anatomy and physiology and med terms, that they are an amazing foundation for when they are taking their college-level courses, that they feel ahead of their peers at their universities, as well as they do like the CNA license, so that they can work and gain experience all at the same time while going to college. So thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
This will bring us to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchra?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFaver?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. This will bring us to our special reports and communications. Freedom of Information Act has been provided for your questions, comments. Moving along to our unfinished business, we've been presented with quite a bit of information about the 60 acres and the property update and land surveys. Is there any questions or comments in regards to that information?
What's our next step here?
So actually, with us tonight is one of the, one of the engineers who was chief, you know, project manager, I suppose, overseeing this and has worked with us closely. So at our next board meeting in June, we will have a presentation about the data that was gathered, and have the engineers here to present that information to us directly for you to ask any of your questions. The last time we discussed this, I think it was three months ago, the board had asked for additional information about the utility of the land, the areas that might be designated as unusable. There was an overall question about the potential different uses, and I think the consultation that we've done, both from the engineers and with the village, has provided, you know, greater depth of information for the board to be able to ask questions of the engineers and of ourselves in terms of what is it that would be the next course of action. The board's strategic plan did list optimizing our resources, and I think the question that would be coming forward is, what disposition would the board have surrounding the land that the board, that, that the district owns? Ultimately, I think that is the, the course of the consideration that is before us.
Were there, did you see any surprises from this report thus far? Was there anything that kind of jumped out?
We learned a great deal. So there are some, for instance, some designated wetlands. In order for those to be fully resolved, for us or anyone else to use the land, it does have to go through a jurisdictional disposition, and that has to go to either the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District or the Army Corps of Engineers. We have asked for that jurisdictional decision. So that was one key, one key item. The other was that while it is an undeveloped parcel, it actually has components that would be tappable for some of the utilities that would be usable on the land, should it be used for something other than, you know, sitting vacant. So our, the work that we've done so far was extremely helpful in, in gathering those components and decision points that the board would need to make for the next steps, if you will.
Bless you. Any other questions?
So the next month's presentation will be about the land itself, and we'll hear from directly those people who did the research and actually know some more of the technical information.
Thank you. We have our school facility rental fees. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended facility rental fee structure as presented to become effective July 1, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not clear, when we have the two categories, how we differentiate the fee between category two and category three. I mean, I know how we differentiate, but I'm just trying to determine how we came up with the difference in fee, I guess, is, is what I'm asking.
Okay, so just for, for a little bit of foundation. So category two is the tax-supported and feeder organizations. Those would include the park districts, municipalities, townships. Those are the items that are within the district, right?
Right.
And your, so your question is comparing that to number three, which is a general nonprofit organization?
Right. So category three, I mean, I, I don't see a, a standard percentage in the difference between the two. You know, there's no, the cost is going to be the same whether category two is using the facility as a category three. So how did we determine the difference between the two? The fee between the two, not how we categorize them.
Any difference in the fee would be related to those that are designated as our feeders.
Right. I understand that. But how do we, which one is the bench? And then there's either a discount for category two users based off of the, the fee for category three, or there's an increase from category two to get to the fee for category three. And how is that step determined?
The, the category three would serve more as the, the bench, as you're stating, with the, the discount going to the category one or category two groups. There is a standard percent difference between category two and category three. So if you were to look at the indoor facility rates, weekend, Saturday, Sunday, holiday rates, the, the increase between category two to three is, I believe it's about 13 or 14%, and you'll see that standard percent difference between each of the category two and three.
It wasn't clear when I was running the numbers.
It wasn't clear when I was running the numbers. I was trying to benchmark that. I mean, maybe there's some rounding errors in there, because it seems like the, the difference isn't standard when I was going down looking at that.
There, there is some rounding in there, but for the most part, it is about between 13 and 14%. The one difference would be in the outdoor facility rate. And that one, again, because we were looking to make an adjustment, because there was not consistency between category two and category three, so we made that adjustment. And again, just getting to, to the figures that we're at, there's, you know, maybe a percent or two difference between the, the various weekday, Saturday, Sunday, holiday. But for the most part, there's standard percent increases if, if you were to run the, the figures all the way down the line there.
So our review was helpful. It did, you know, help enlighten us to some of those corrections that, that, you know, Mrs. Hummel just referenced. And we did recommend a, a slight increase. They have not been changed for several years. So we're coming to you tonight with, you know, our recommended structure that we think has been looked at and updated and is a bit more fitting.
Ms. Burke, I have a couple of questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
So my questions are less about the rates themselves and more about, I guess, the rental process. I wanted to ask if we feel like the administrative staff who's reviewing the request has a good understanding of what groups fall into the different categories and are comfortable sort of rerouting a group to a different category, you know, if necessary? And then the second question is more about the people and employees in our buildings who might schedule the rooms or might receive requests directly. You know, do they understand that there's a process and are they comfortable routing, you know, members of the public or other employees who are requesting use of the rooms back, you know, into the right channel to follow the proper process?
Those are all items, so thanks for the questions. Those items have been reconciled as part of our overall review. The groups, and I think the board has received messages occasionally from groups who have not been designated feeders and have sought the feeder designation. And so those reviews are ongoing. We do have two designated administrators who, who review each of the requests, depending on the type and nature. And so the, the process, if you will, that, and some of the recent questions that have been raised have been helpful for us to look at and to examine. The review was also, in, in looking at our usage rates, our usage frequency, very helpful for us to examine and to refresh our people in terms of the spaces that we have. As we have used our, for example, our media centers in different ways, the update has allowed us to keep our staff aware of the rental processes, of the, updating the rates has, again, identified the areas of ripples within the organization and management that, you know, need to be aware. And the processes have been refreshed. So I think to your question, any of our updates and refreshes have been helpful for us to identify where a slippage can occur. And it, it has been a very helpful overall process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Member roll call, please.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. This will bring us to our treasurer bond renewal. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education secure treasurer bonds for Barbara Peterson as school treasurer and Lauren Hummel as assistant school treasurer of the Township High School District 21 in the amount of $18,700 per bond.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Resolution calling a public hearing for interfund transfers for capital improvement projects. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education directs publication of a notice of public hearing to take place at its June 15, 2017, meeting to consider the permanent interfund transfer of $19 million from the educational fund to its operations and maintenance fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. The next suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Edward Young to attend the new board member workshop state mandated training on June 9, 2017, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Is there anybody that would like to bring a potential topic up for discussion? Moving on to our committee reports, Mrs. Klimkowitz with N S S E O.
I have no report. Our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday.
Thank you. We have our education, research, and development legislative report. Mr. Dombrowski?
Haven't had a meeting yet. It should be next Friday.
We are, with our twice-a-month here, we are in front of everyone's meetings. So, Mrs. Klimkowitz, anything with partners for our community, evening community services, or Mr. Kovak?
We actually did have a meeting since last, May 15 was the most recent action. There were, just a couple of highlights. I had mentioned the Cinco de Mayo fundraiser that POC was hosting. It was a very successful event, raising some funds to help keep that organization moving in the right direction. They have another opportunity for people who might be interested in helping financially, an annual golf outing. And if there's any interest in that, I'd be happy to pass information on to, to those people. The, the summer is fast approaching, and during those months, the evening services program does close its doors. But there is a, one particular summer event that is in deep planning right now. It is the I Compete Summer Program. It'll be hosted for students at John Muir School through District 54. District 21 is in partnership with that in large effort, adding student volunteers as our contribution to help that program run. And I know there's a great deal of excitement about that.
Thank you. There are upcoming dates for your review. Also, I want to thank everyone who have participated in graduations. I know it means a lot to our community to see us out there. The next item of business is to enter closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session, discuss the minutes of the meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and a matter relating to an individual student, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees and their representatives, and the purchase or lease of real estate property for the use of the public body.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. The acceptance of retirement requests. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Douglas Danowitz, effective May 2021, according to the master contract of the District 21 Teachers Union, Daniel Katz, effective June 2020, according to his contract with the Board of Education, and Jermaine Wells, effective May 2018, according to the master contract of the District 21 Teachers Union.
Grudgingly so moved.
Second.
May I have any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. Any discussion in regards to tonight's meeting? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.